Deed me, everybody. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given according with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board, showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, Lacy High School girls soccer team. I guess that's. So we have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Unfortunately, our mayor is ill and not here, but I'll stand in. Whereas the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two Lacy Women's varsity soccer team finished their regular season with a B-South division record of six wins and one loss and an overall record of fifteen, seven, and two. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two Lacy Women's varsity soccer team are the B-South champions for back-to-back seasons. And whereas the Lacy Women's varsity soccer team won the first round in the Shore Conference Championship, beating Trinity Hall four to one, further advancing to the second round to beat fourth-seeded Saint Piany with a record of two to one. And whereas on November thirteenth, the Lacy Women's varsity soccer team defeated fourth-seeded Mainland at home three to two in kicks after a one-to-one draw, winning the South Jersey Group Three sectional championship for the first time in eighteen years. And whereas the township of Lacy is extremely proud of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Lacy Women's varsity soccer team, their head coach and Shore Conference Coach of the Year, Jack Maher, assistant coaches Robert Brewster and Cheryl Schleganischak. I think I did pretty good.
I would have destroyed it.
And all the wonderful loyal Lacy fans for their encouragement and support of this dedicated championship soccer team. Now therefore, I Nicholas Julian, well, I Nick Mark, I go, but on behalf of Nicholas Giannano of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean City, New Jersey, on behalf of myself and the township committee and the residents of Lacy Township, do hereby recognize and commend the accomplishments of the Lacy Women's varsity soccer team state sectional championships. I applaud your dedication, desire, and hard work, and commend them for a job well done. I'm going to call up the coach, please. And as you read the names, because I did one, I'm not going to do anymore.
I can take this off.
Huh?
I can take this off.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, you're allowed to take your mask off.
Take them off.
Take your mask off.
All right. We're allowed.
I don't know if they're here or not.
Maddie Bell.
She's not here, she's not working.
All right. Marley Besser.
Do you want us to find him, I'll pay me over there and then we can get a big picture.
Maggie Brothersden. Emily Dacus. Celine Gutierrez. Avery Johnson. Julianna Lito. Lori LeParina. Reese Paget, who's here. Brooke Schmidt. Kiara Wimbush. And Leah Rittman.
Media business.
Nope.
Okay, great. So those are the extras, we need to hand out to the young ladies that aren't here.
All right. Thank you so much.
Do you want to say anything?
Tell us a little, tell us a little about the season, Coach.
Well, got to get in front of the mic. I don't really need the mic, but as you can tell, this is a great group of young ladies who are supported by their parents. We had great support from the school on our championship run. I could tell the very first day we stepped on the field in the summer for our first summer workout that they were going to be special. They work hard, they don't complain. We just did what we needed to do. We were not afraid of anybody on our schedule. We took one game at a time, they played their hearts out. They never gave up, as evidenced by our semifinal win against Clearview, we were down two-zero at half, and we had a little talk at halftime. We just made it known that Ocean City, the number-one seed, had already lost. So if they wanted to play the final at home, we needed to do what we, you know, changed things around and we got things done and came out and we beat them three to two. So then we took on Mainland and we were up one-zero and there was a little bit of a questionable call right at the end.
I'll talk about that in a second. Because I was at the game.
That, you know, it didn't go our way, but luckily, because I would have, I would have felt awful if we wound up not winning that game in kicks. But it all worked out and we played a great game against Princeton in the group semifinal, but, you know, the ball just didn't bounce our way at the end and unfortunately, they hit a ball and it went in and I'm glad they lost in the final. With that being said, I just, my other coaches, Bob Brewster and Cheryl Schleganichak, they're a great staff, we work well together. We are looking forward to, I mean, we already have a countdown for when we're starting in July, so I just, I'm looking forward to getting back on the field with this group. We lose six phenomenal seniors that are going to be missed, but we have a great, a great group of people coming back and hopefully, our incoming freshman class is as strong as this year's was. So hopefully, we'll see you again next year. All right, thank you very much.
Slide down, ladies, slide down, we'll give some pictures. All the way down here, we don't fight. high words on your great accomplishment. Mr. McDonald, please.
Glenn, let him sit down. Okay. Winning the Class B South is a heck of an accomplishment, Coach. You girls don't realize, but you are memorialized in Lacy High School sports history forever. The plaque will go up on the wall outside of them tearing a school down and rebuild another one, I don't see that happening in the near future. That plaque will always be there.
We don't need that room.
Will always be there, and that's something to be very proud about. So when you're forty-five, fifty, and you come back, you bring your kids back, you can say, there I am. That's something to be very proud about. I happen to be at that game, Coach, the Mainland game. Where's the keeper? That ball never crossed the goal line.
I know.
And I know the rule, because my son played for Coach as a goalie. I was standing right on that goal line, on the side of the bench, and never crossed it, and that referee never came past the eighteen, so he couldn't have seen it anyhow.
We have a video.
But you also had something in there, I think it was around the thirteen-minute mark, there was a flurry in front of the, your goal. And they weren't just guys, girls trying to kick the ball and rolling off their feet, there were about four or five hard shots in there, and you came up big, huge.
Thank you.
And the girls, I always enjoyed going to those types of games because the best players are on the best teams, and they lace them up and they get after one another. And it was just a great game to watch. Just, and who was the one girl that got hurt, the far end?
Natalie.
Natalie. You put her back in. You put her back in. That's, I mean, she was laying on the ground for five minutes.
Oh, boy.
Well, okay, but the fact.
The women are tougher than the men.
Yeah. You want to say that, go right ahead. But I saw that game and I was, I was absolutely impressed. It was a great victory, great season, and I congratulate you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kennes.
Yeah, girls, I want to congratulate you also. It's a great sense of accomplishment and you should all be very proud of yourselves. I graduated all the way back in nineteen eighty-nine, and to see sports teams advance and read about them in the Star Ledger, I think is quite an accomplishment. I get a sense of pride myself when you see, you know, when you see Lacy teams go, get recognized in the New Jersey media like that, so congratulations. I'd also like to acknowledge the coaches and your parents for all the hard work and, you know, the training and the practices and the time that they gave up themselves on the weekends just to make sure that you girls achieved the most you can, so congratulations.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. As I think a lot of people in our town know, the deputy mayor and myself are the only folks up here that have only girls in our families. And I tell you, I'm probably going to lose half the male votes, but I'm definitely partial. I'm all about girl power, I like it when the Girl Scouts come up here and get their equipment, the gold award, to the Boy Scouts, Tim, I'm drawing a blank.
Eagle.
Eagle. Eagle. And it's just so great to see, you know, our girls here from home doing, doing this and getting recognized like my good friend here, Committee McKennett, said, and major newspapers all across our state. Really, really proud of you. I know you're going to do great, whatever you choose to do, and I hope we all see you back, and I hope you coach and teach here someday. Because that legacy stuff means a lot in our town. And we know all, you know, your families that have done that, you have such great names and reputations, I recognize half of the names, so thanks again on behalf of all of us and congratulations.
Yeah, so basically, of course, as we always like to give credit to the coaches and parents, because, I mean, without them, I mean, you do all the work, but they're behind you. So as Mr. Curatola said, I am the father of two daughters and the grandfather of a granddaughter, and I'm kind of partial to girls. But the interesting part, I'm also Recreation Director of Berkeley Township, and what I see with these girls' sports groups, who are, are just surpassing all expectations, it's amazing, it really is amazing. And from a Lacy Township resident, we're so proud of you, and I know great things will be coming in the future and, you know, great coaches and great parents, so congratulations, and we'll see you here again. So before we let you go, we're going to make you sit for two more very short things, and then we'll adjourn and let everyone leave. So item number two is Fishhawks Annual Flea Market Request to Post Signs.
The Fishhawks have their annual flea market at the Lacy Outfodge on Martin's Fifth, and one week in advance, they like to post signs throughout the community, those typical lawn signs. Can I have a motion approved?
Move it.
All favor?
Item number three, upcoming budget meetings.
Okay, so people budget meetings scheduled for St. Patty's Day, March seventeenth, and Mr. Di, no, excuse me, McDonald is on vacation, so I'd like to postpone that and make it March thirty-first, and hopefully that will be our final budget meeting, and we can hopefully introduce April fourteenth. Or April, yeah, April fourteenth. So are we all good with that?
I am.
Any motion?
No. I just, I already have it advertised for the thirty-first, because I've taken care of that, so it's just a matter of canceling it. So we are done with this agenda, if anybody has anything else?
Nope.
All voters to return?
Move it. Second.
All in favor? Now, young ladies and coaches and parents.
Best of luck to you ladies.
Best of luck. Thank you. We're going to have pretty good luck. Hey, Coach, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Coach. Good job. Congratulations.
Stop, right? What's all this?
I'm going to go over to my resume. What's your old title? Are you wanting to get your fantastic? Are you better? Yeah, it's tough. But it's, 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 hopefully I'll get a hat.
Fourth bike. Excellent. Excellent.
Nice to see you. Thanks, sir. Lucky.
So our only budget meetings on the thirty-first, that's it? That's the next one?
That's the next one, and that's.
At what time?
Four-thirty.
Unless you want me to call in from the Keys on St. Patty's.
So, no, wait, wait, no, we do, Steve, we do have a budget meeting next week, March third, and then our final one, the finalized capital, will be March thirty-first.
All right, so we don't have that one at four-thirty.
All right. All right. Next one. Welcome to the township meeting of Lacy, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given according with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on Bolton Board, showing the time and the place of the meeting, the Sart, pursuant to the flag and the honor of the powers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, first reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-four, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots twenty-six through twenty-nine, from Kevin Barra.
In order to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block eighteen fifty-three, lots twenty-six through twenty-nine on Newark Avenue North pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash five. This is in the area in need of redevelopment, which is behind where the apartments are over here for the phase three of our affordable housing to meet our affordable housing obligation under the court settlement. We are picking this up in the value of seventy-two thousand dollars from the firm property owner.
Motion? Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Item number two, first reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-five, authorizing the purchase of various parcels from James Downmire.
In order to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of property pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash five. This is block eighteen fifty-two, lots twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-six and twenty-seven on Newark Avenue North, block eighteen fifty-three, lots eighteen and nineteen on Calvin Street, and lots twenty-four and twenty-five on Newark Avenue North. Again, in the same location and same area, the total value of these properties from Mr. Downmire is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. This all comes out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that is paid for by the developers, not coming out of your tax dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number three, second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-two, authorizing the sale of block one zero one point twelve, lot one twenty, to the adjoining property owner.
In order to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of block one zero one point twelve, lot one twenty on the municipal tax maps to Roberto and Michelle Verardi in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen, forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen B and NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen point two. This is a, which is known as an old fire easement, as we call it. It's a twenty-by-one-hundred parcel being sold to the adjoining property owner for the value of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second reading, open to public comment. See, now make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor? Make a motion to pass.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number four, second reading ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-three, amending and supplementing the municipal code as to create Article Three for electric vehicle supply service equipment.
In order to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Article Three, Chapter Three, Five, entitled General Regulations to Authorize and Encourage Electric Vehicle Supply Service Equipment and Make Ready Marketing Spaces. This is a mandate from the state that we need to update our municipal code with regards to the electric vehicle supply and service equipment. This is all based on the twenty-nineteen Energy Master Plan related to the Global Warming Response Act. Second reading?
Chris Bender, name and address, please.
Yes, sir. I got to do the limo. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue, as we discussed a little bit last week, or last meeting, I should say. I am real happy about this, I mean, I don't know what it's going to cost us, but watch what happens at the gas pumps in the next couple of days. If we can go electric and, excuse me personally, if I can get to the guys at the gas pump, that's, that's a good thing as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, now make a motion to close the floor. Move it. All in favor? All in favor? Motion on your ordinance? Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Senator Connors, he is a co-sponsor of this bill, so he is fighting hard for taxpayers throughout the state and, of course, in this community, to see that this money gets rightfully restored to the towns instead of the state skimming off the top. And it would have to be put into tax relief, not necessarily do you have to lower the taxes, but you have to make, you know, have stabilization of the tax base.
Move it. Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Senator Connors, do you have anything to say about this?
No, thank you.
We got a comments to the end, do you want me to include you in the comments to the end when we go? Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ninety, appointing labor counsel for twenty-twenty-two.
Resolution to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Gene Cipriani of Ross D. Mandelstrom, Palm, and Cipriani, and Armando Riccio Escire as labor counsel for the Township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Senator Connors, do you have anything to say about this?
No, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Do you want me to include you in the comments to the end when we go? Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ninety, appointing labor counsel for twenty-twenty-two.
Resolution to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Jean Cipriani of Ross D. Mandelstrom, Palm, and Cipriani, and Armando Riccio Escire as labor counsel for the Township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
And Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes, and thank you, Administrator Ray, for working on that. I think it'd be a big help. Item number nine, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ninety-three, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the Sunrise Boulevard and First Street Road Improvement Project.
Resolution to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of site improvement performance guarantee posted by Swift and Sons for the Sunrise Boulevard and First Street Road Improvement Project upon the posting of a maintenance bond. This has been, the performance section of this project is now done, the contractor must post a maintenance bond for at least one year to make sure that the improvements are upheld.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number ten, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash ninety-four, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-five, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to the Township of Lacy County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of one million one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents, and this is including one bill that I'm adding for the Forkett River diner tonight, to pay them for the meal coverage during the January twenty-ninth snowstorm.
Thanks. Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennes?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number twelve, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen, motion to approve township meeting minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, motion to approve a rapal license for Rotary Club of Forkett River and the Coastal Volunteers and Medicine Clinic, Inc.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fifteen, motion to approve bingo license for the Lacy Alex.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
No, I have no add-on.
Comments from the committee? Mr. McDonald? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to start with the energy tax receipt. That's huge. You get an extra six million per year. That's absolutely huge. You know, and just so everybody knows, at one time, that money had come directly to the township. And then a guy named Senator Russo, I believe it was, who was from Ocean County, decided that the money should go to the state, and they would dull it out and they'd pick up the float and all that other stuff, and of course, once they got their hands on it, you know what exactly happened. They started taking off of it. So coming back, getting it back, forcing the state to do what was right from the beginning, I'm all for. I want to congratulate our special that we hired tonight, Casey, nice young man, he was here in a suit tonight, came up, introduced himself, very, very good. And the tide water, and the tide control valves, these are really important. I've been on the committee for seven years now, and this is always a problem every time there's a rain, you know, I've called Ron, what's going on with the? Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty-nine, urging the passage, passage of S dash three thirty, which restores energy tax receipts.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey urging the swift passage of S three three zero, which restores energy tax receipts. As some of you may, may or may not be aware, the township of Lacey receives what's known as energy tax receipts based on the, uh, you, public utilities that cross through our roadways and our lines. And we be having one of the largest in the state of New Jersey with West Creek. We receive eleven point one million dollars in energy tax receipts, which is a third of our municipal budget. However, the state started dipping into and taking it from all the municipalities over the years, and we are not getting our rightful amount. So this is urging them to restore it back to what it should be. And if this is successful in passing, Lacey Township is due to see approximately an additional six million dollars a year, um, in energy tax receipts. Uh, Senator Connors, he is a co-sponsor of this bill, so he is fighting hard for, um, taxpayers, um, throughout the state and, of course, in this community, to see that this money gets rightfully restored to the towns instead of the, the state skimming off the top. And it would have to be put into, uh, tax relief, not necessarily do you have to lower the taxes, but you have to make, you know, have stabilization of the tax base.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Senator Connors, do you have anything to say about this?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you want me to include you in the comments at the end when we go? Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety, appointing labor council for twenty twenty-two.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing appointment of Jean Cipriani, Avrostein, Man Del Strum, Pam and Cipriani, and Armando Riqui Oesgair as labor council for the township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-one, appointing a class-two special law enforcement officer.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, appointing Casey LePesco as a class-two special law enforcement officer for the township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-two, authorizing receipt of bids for tide control valves.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for the purchase and delivery of WAP Pro Tide Control Valves for the approved heat well. The township of Lacey, um, on our low-lying streets, especially the Hawaiian streets, we are looking to install these new, uh, valves that will help with some of the tidal flow. It's not going to prevent it, but it's going to hopefully work better than the ones that were currently in the streets. There's forty-two street ends total throughout the community, and not just the Beach Boulevard community, but throughout the town in general, that we are looking to go out to bid for and to purchase the valves. Um, this is a new, um, device that's out there. We have three in now. It appears to be working, uh, much better than the, uh, current valves that are in. And, uh, it's about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and we're using the American Recovery Act money to purchase that. So again, it's not going to have any effect upon our budget and our taxes. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
And Mr. Dykoff?
Yes, and thank you, Administrator Luray for working on that. I think, uh, be a big help. Item number nine, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-three, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the Sunrise Boulevard and First Street Road Improvement Project.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing release of site improvement performance guarantee posted by Swift and Suns for the Sunrise Boulevard and First Street Road Improvement Project upon the posting of a maintenance bond. This has been, the performance section of this project is now done. The contractor must post a maintenance bond for at least one year to make sure that the improvements are upheld. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number ten, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-four, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number eleven, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ninety-five, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. And this is including one bill that I'm adding for the Forkett River Diner tonight to pay them for the, um, meal coverage during the January twenty-ninth snowstorm.
Thanks.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. Item number twelve, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen, motion to approve township meeting minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, motion to approve a rental license for Rotary Club of Forkett River and the Coastal Volunteers and Medicine Clinic, Inc.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number fifteen, motion to approve bingo license for the Lacey Elks.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
No, I have no add-ons.
Comments from the committee? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, the ener, I'm gonna start with the energy tax receipt. That's huge. You get an extra six million per year. That's absolutely huge. You know, just so everybody knows, at one time, that, that money come directly to the township. And then a guy named Senator Russell, I believe it was, uh, who was from Ocean County, decided that the money should go to the state, and they would dull it out, and they'd pick up the float, and all that other stuff. And of course, once they got their hands on it, you know what exactly happened. They started taking off of it. So, coming back, getting it back, forcing the state to do what was right from the beginning, uh, I'm, I'm all for. I wanna congratulate our, uh, special that we hired tonight, Casey. Nice young man, he was here in a suit tonight, came up, introduced himself.
Yeah.
Uh, very, very, very good. Um, and the tide water, and the tide control valves, these are really important. Uh, I've been on the committee for seven years now, and this is always a problem every time there's a rain. You know, I've called Ron, what's going on with the Hawaiian streets? No, they're flooded. This isn't gonna prevent it. The only thing that's gonna prevent it is we pump out the bay. So, uh, which we're not allowed to do. What's that?
D E P should let you do that, right?
They would. Well, where, where would we pump it? Into the ocean, run back in?
Kid, because we can.
No, no, we put out a big flow. Okay. But, so, it's not gonna, and it's, we, we try to help the people down there, but, you know, this is something we, we, we gotta do. And I do wanna talk on what Mr. Bender had to say, his, when he came up to the mic, um, about the energy tax receipts and the gasoline and so forth like that. My day was spent on nothing but conference calls with, I refer to them as the knuckleheads, but they're the analysts and so forth, telling what's happening on Ukraine and so forth. And I can tell you this, what, what they're saying scares the hell out of me. There is something called the SWIFT Bank, which is, if you do international monetary transfers or sales, everything goes through this bank, including oil. And Boris Johnson, the Prime Minister of England, is screaming that he wants Russia removed from the SWIFT Bank. Well, that sounds like a great idea, 'cause how do we punish Putin? The opposite of that is, if you think about it, how does Germany and Eastern, uh, Western Europe buy their gasoline and natural gas from Russia, which gives them to them? They can't go through that bank. They gotta go with the ruble, it's, it would be a mess, it would be draconian. Let's face facts. He's gonna get Ukraine. He's gonna get Ukraine. It's just a matter of the other part that we gotta stop. So, but every one of these analysts, and these guys got PhDs, they got the alphabet behind them, they're saying that, um, in the long run, this is gonna hurt Russia. In the very long run, they're talking, going out five, ten years. But anyhow, are the gas prices gonna go up? Yes. Goldman Sachs has got inflation, uh, seven, seven increases by the end of the year. So, gas is gonna go through the roof. Actually, it broke, it broke one oh, one oh one today, but start out at ninety-seven and change a barrel, finish at ninety-seven barrel today. So, get ready, it's gonna go up. And just so everybody knows, if you look at what Ukraine provides to, to this world, it's, it's unbelievable. The, the commodities that it provides, particularly fertilizer, which helps us, our farmers, grow. So, it's gonna be pain. How's this affect Lacey? It affects all of our citizens going through here. It's, it's gonna, and Regina, I know you do the grocery shopping, it's gonna be, you're gonna pay more, you're gonna pay more. You do the grocery shopping, ma'am?
No.
No, you do.
To get back on comments, a couple meetings.
So, so you know that the price of milk has gone up?
She has no idea.
So, get ready, pay more. And hopefully on the, on the electric cars, that, that, that's gonna have to be put on hold, because this is, we gotta solve this issue. And one guy made a great comment today, he said, he said, yeah, we're gonna eventually go green, but it's not gonna be for the next seventy years. So we gotta get, we gotta get our fossil fuels in line. So, with that, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, right before I got here, I attended an online risk seminar. Um, Veronica sends out these, uh, I guess continuing education things that we have to do, um, on behalf of the Township Committee. And so that's run by the, what is the MEL, what does that stand for?
Municipal Access Liability Insurance Fund.
Yeah, so that's our insurance fund. And, um, we pool all our insurance, and that way we minimize the risk. But there's, uh, the, uh, you know, it's almost depressing to watch those seminars, 'cause there's so many new, um, things to look out for, just, you know, it's constant, it's constant cost control in, for townships. You know, there was a lot of cybersecurity, and a cybersecurity risk, environmental risk, and sexual harassment risk, along with the normal risks, like just, uh, safety risk. And, um, you know, we all do the best we can to stay on top of it. Veronica does a good job of keeping us abreast of any changes, but it, there's, there's just a lot to digest, um, in, in government, really. And, uh, you know, Lacey does the best we can to manage that risk, but I just want everybody to know that we do take all that stuff seriously, and we do, like I said, we do, uh, you know, stuff outside of our, you know, this normal job right here, there is, there's extra, there's continuing education that we all do, so. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Kurtolo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Like, uh, to dovetail on some comments already said this evening, uh, I would like to also mention that as far as COVID goes, the county as a whole experienced thirty-eight new confirmed cases yesterday. So again, I'm not here to minimize, but that virtually is a statistical zero. So I'm glad to see things, and I'm hopeful to see things going back to normality and normal items and static control for the foreseeable future. The American Recovery Plan Funds, we've discussed them internally, and you just heard the Committeeman McDonald talk about the control valves, and that's gonna bring definite relief for our folks down on Hawaiian streets. Now, that's long overdue, and, uh, I feel obligated, and I know we all are in agreement, uh, to bring those folks, uh, down there, some, some, some relief. And if it's these control valves that can ameliorate some of that, then that's a good thing. We heard Mr. Bender talk about electric cars, I said a couple of years ago, I actually did an interview with Jersey Shore Online, I wasn't the only one. These is, this is gonna be mandates, and municipalities are gonna have to put charging stations in. Uh, I anticipate some of our department heads sooner rather than later are gonna have to put some electric vehicles into their budget. That's just gonna be the way it's gonna go. I don't anticipate that Trenton or the federal government will give us anything to put in, a three hundred thousand to a million dollar charging station. Uh, but that's the world we live in. There, it's the land of unfunded mandates, and it's unfortunate, I'm, I'm hoping that doesn't happen. I wanna thank, uh, Senator Connors for his work, um, with the nuclear plant and advocating for us for this six million dollars. He's a senior senator, he holds high, high, high respect in that senate. So it's great to have him here for his guidance. And lastly, and you, and you heard, uh, Committeeman, uh, McDonald talk about it, you know, there's a lot of, everything that's going on now, and this is, it's gonna sound political, but it's not. There's a vacuum of leadership, and that has emboldened many people around this world, and it's very unfortunate. You just water it down to the sandbox, where the, where the bus, or the day you had a substitute teacher. People will take advantage, and we jaw with each other up here, and we finally agree at the end. But we, you, you're constantly being metered, engaged by people around you that are your, your friends and your opponents. These two world leaders in particular, President Putin and President Xi, have seized on this, and what do I turn on the news and I see today? A woke socialist agenda, and by twenty thirty-five, we're gonna have a completely green, uh, carbon footless, footprintless military. These two guys are serious individuals, and I pray, I pray that our, our president has the strength and the will to stand up to him, 'cause I'm really, really more concerned now than I've ever been. These guys are emboldened, they're affecting, and what has it, Pete, you're talking about Ukraine has it? Well, here's how it affects, I mean, we talk about these people in front of us right now, and what we're paying at the supermarket. It was two hundred dollars a few months ago, it was two hundred and fifty dollars, it's gonna be three hundred. Tim had said, the gas, um, this is, this is hitting us here in America. We need leadership. Speak softly, carry a big stick, my daughter was asking me about that, she had AP history the other day. I said, well, this is what, Dad, you're getting political. No, I'm not getting political again. This is in every interpersonal situation that we go through in our everyday lives, three, four times a day. People are gauging you, they're measuring you, they test you. So I pray for our country, and I pray for our president. I may not agree with our president, but I pray for him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, just wanna talk about the two items that have already been touched on, the energy receipt tax. It's been talked about a lot for many, many, many years about, uh, legislation to restore that. And, um, again, I wanna thank Senator Connors for being one of the, uh, weapons of that. It, nothing happens quick, but at least we're making efforts. There are a lot of efforts out there as it relates to, to, um, helping municipalities with nuclear power plants, like us who've been decommissioned, whether they be, um, funds for spent fuel, uh, host funds, or energy receipt tax. So it's coming around as time goes on, so I'm very happy to see that, hopefully we'll see something. And then the other thing is the valves. Again, I thank, uh, Administrator Luray for, uh, engineering, getting the funds to pay for that. It's not gonna solve all the problems there, but we are working on that as well, and, and I know, uh, Administrator, Administrator Luray has been in contact with Congressman Chris Smith's office to set up a meeting. Um, we have applied to FEMA for a FEMA grant, we've been turned down. Hopefully with this, um, with the Bill to Make America Better, which is the infrastructure bill that was passed, we can get some of that money funneled without Congressman. So with that, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone?
Hold on, Matt, Matt, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, before you do that, I need to amend my vote on the, um, on the bill.
Goes to zero four hundred?
Yeah, zero, I got to stay on zero four hundred.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Ms. DeSenza, name and address, please.
Regina DeSenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Um, did anyone happen to watch the school board meeting last week? Do you know what the current news is?
The what?
The current news is? Okay, so I'll let you know, 'cause I can. Um, the school board reached impasse with the Lacey Township Teachers Association, and as, I've been walking around the neighborhood the last few days, I noticed some signs went up that said, "No contract, still working." They still have a contract, it's just expired. I wish they would print the truth on those signs, because all provisions remain the same until a new contract is signed. I just happened to have a copy, because I almost had to go into negotiations last year, but I was not able to, but I just wanted to let you know that they've reached impasse with an expired contract.
Thank you. Mr. Bender?
On the international front, okay, my prayers go out to the people in the Ukraine and Russian soldiers also, who are gonna lose their lives as a result of this war going on. And I think we need to keep them in our prayers and in our minds also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? See now, motion to close the floor.
Second. Aye, uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ninety-six, authorizing the convening of an executive session.
Resolution attached Lacey County versus State of New Jersey, authorizing convening of executive session to discuss contractual matters and matters of personnel, penalty, um, real estate matters. We're still waiting to hear back from the state.
Hello, hello?
We're still waiting to hear back from the state, they have not responded to us yet. And I am trying to coordinate, yes, I got your recent email, um, I am trying to coordinate with Mr. Connors, convening with our prosecutor to see what can we do in the meantime, or what other avenues.
Can I, can I, may I tell you what else happened that day? Uh, we left our home for five hours. We came back, and I had everything videotaped. I videotaped the music as I'm getting out of my car, walking into the house, I, the music, the bass that's inside my house, the music that's outside my house. So we got fed up. I have done everything that I possibly can, I don't know what else to do.
We're trying.
Which is why I'm here after three years of, of the constant harassment from them. But we, we got fed up, so we turned our music on, so I did not have to hear theirs. Right? I just, I even videoed myself saying this, I, what else can I do? So I'm just gonna turn my music on, so I don't have to hear that. So what did he do? He called the police on us.
Oh, gosh.
You're kidding me?
I'm not kidding you, and I would not even know if, if we were talking with our back neighbor, that's what I also said, I said I have to get my neighbors involved, which I tried not to do for three years. I didn't wanna pull them into my stuff. So They, he called the police, and I only knew this because he, I heard, I heard that he turned his music off. I went in and I turned my music off, and I heard him speaking, so I went out front and saw that the police officers were out, were out there, so, you know.
What did the police officer say?
Officer Holt. Was that? Officer Holt responded?
He recognized us, he recognized us, he watches the media, he's not saying anything.
So he, so he knew what was going on?
So, can I just please tell you all, I, it's not just, it's not just music, it is, it is harassment at this point. It, it's intentional. That's what the definition of harassment is, it's doing something, even the most mundane, like listening to music, when it's, when it has a purpose, it's harassment. And I have gone through the whole thing, I've gone through court, to, to the point where I lost in court because of, of the ordinance.
Well, we're working on it, you see, we are, and that's why Veronica called you back up to let you know that
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they don't, they don't respond. Yep, so we, we knew why you were here, and we know, and listen, we appreciate you keep on coming in, as soon as we get something
But can you please tell me what is actually gonna be done? Because, I mean, I had a police officer at my house. Uh, they called the police on us.
Chris?
What, what can
Yeah, there was no violation to any issue to you, right?
No. No. No, but still, I, it's just ongoing.
It's basically, they're Well, once we get a, a code that is acceptable to the state of New Jersey, because again, we've made some
But are the police gonna follow through? And they don't want, they don't
They're supposed to follow through in accordance with the code.
They don't seem to want to.
Well, right now, they're That would be a discussion that we will have internally, so you don't have to worry about that.
Don't even worry about that.
It's not, we're in the Noka section, and the houses are very close to each other, they'll, they'll park their vehicles right next door.
It's from here, it's from here, here, and they'll, they'll, and when the day is that they can't play in the backyard, they sit in the driveway with their, with their car stereos full tilt. I have video of that, well, I have video and documentation of everything that they do. Everything, nobody wants to see it. And that's, that was, um, that was the police officer telling me, take the documentation, but nobody looks at it.
Just hold on, hold on to that. It gets to the point where it becomes a civil matter, and you're obviously filing something civilly yourself.
You're not barred from filing civil suit.
I mean, that's the unfortunate part, so you'd have to
Yeah, the hardest part for us to resolve are actually neighbor disputes, we call them. Um, it takes a very long time when somebody's, we had this prob, a similar problem on Beach Boulevard a number of years ago. It took a very long time. It was, it was over, he was parking too many vehicles in the street, and then we tried banning parking on one side, and then those neighbors didn't like it, and then he just kept moving vehicles, it took a very, very long time to resolve. 'Cause he, in effect, wasn't really breaking any
Exactly, I know, that's why I say the intent is there, that
Let's take one step at a time, and, you know, we're, we're trying, we're doing the best we can.
Thank you very much. And I, please, may, I mean no disrespect.
No, no, we get it. I was just wanting, I wanted to let you know, you know
We haven't, we haven't forgotten it.
Believe me, we know.
We read your email, it's heartbreaking. We're trying to work on it. I mean, I, I personally don't like it, but it's never personal up here, we gotta do it the right way. And we got, we got the best in, in the business working on it, so.
Okay, we have a resolution, I need a motion or a resolution.
No, thank you.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes. A motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.